Just so everyone knows, we're waiting on our camera, our technicians, to get us started. Is Mr. Councilman Roman Reyna here? I'm gonna call this meeting to order. The City Council Special Meeting of Saturday, September 22nd, 2014. If I could have the room quiet, please. I'd appreciate it. We're gonna go ahead and start with, what I'm gonna do here is, the way I'm gonna structure this is, we're gonna go ahead and have our city manager give us a report. I'm gonna ask all my colleagues that we refrain from any questions during the report. After the report, I will start with Councilmember Benavides, and just work my way around. I'm asking our colleagues if we can keep it within ten minutes, our questions and comments, if you need to go over, of course, you know, we can look at time. Public speakers are gonna have two minutes to speak today. We have quite a few public speakers, so that we can keep it within time. With that, thank you, everyone, for coming. This is an exciting time, the first time in many, many years that we've had a strategic plan. So as we're moving along, I think we have a great quarterback leading the way, and with that, if we can have our city manager, Mr. Cavazos, come on up and give us a report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Tinerero, members of the City Council. I am very honored to present the strategic plan draft for your review and input, and I do wanna start out with a special thank you to the mayor and City Council for your leadership, and especially to the Council AID Committee. The entire Santa Ana community has been engaged, KidWorks, Latino Health Access, OCO, OC Labor Federation, Sacred, has been extremely helpful and supportive, and of course, our executive management team, and all the city staff. We have an agenda today, and I will go through the outline briefly. We have to emphasize the importance of a strategic plan. I've often said, a lack of a plan is a plan to fail. It's a roadmap for the future. I do wanna emphasize that the plan is a roadmap, but it's not rigid. We should not limit ourselves to the plan. We do have to be responsive, and flexible, and nimble as an organization. We will update it annually. We will organize around the plan. And finally, I just wanna emphasize that this is the first plan that I'm aware of, at least in many, many years. It is not perfection, it is progress. This plan will represent progress for the city of Santa Ana. I do wanna talk about how we got to this point, what's next in our schedule. We're gonna do a recap of the community engagement and involvement. We do have some guiding principles that reflect the city's values, that we have received from the mayor, the council, the community, from staff. We will give an overview of the plan, and finally, the emphasis for today is input from the City Council. That would be the focus for today. We had tremendous amount of community input, and also want to let everybody know, especially the viewing audience, and the members of the public that are here today, that Mayor Polito is out of town on business. I've already scheduled a time to review the meeting and plan with him, and also Angie Amescua unfortunately could not be here today, and I've scheduled time with her. So, how did we get here? We began with a sunshine ordinance to improve transparency, and that was very important. That was done in October of 2012. So you can see that the beginning of this plan started over a year ago. We had many meetings, we had amendments to the sunshine ordinance to adopt a timeframe for the strategic plan, and then we had additional City Council leadership on the plan. Then, we went to work in earnest in August with community forums. Over 175 people attended. We did an environmental scan to get input in many, many ways, and we had over 1,000 people respond to the survey. We had an additional meeting, more workshops, and at the end of the day, that took us to February 8th of 2014. Going forward, we have become very community-focused, very staff-driven. We had an excellent consultant, but here we are today on February 22nd to obtain input from the City Council. Once today is done, we'll get additional feedback between February 23rd and March 11th. The goal would be to have an adoption of the strategic plan, March 18th. Again, won't be perfect, but progress. And then approval for the funding. Very important to emphasize that we have new resources, and we will be adding programs and funding programs. And then, time to go to work with implementation for next fiscal year, but we will start right away as soon as we get approval. Community engagement is more than I've ever witnessed in my entire career of 27 years. We had community meetings, we had focused outreach in three different languages, we've had City Council interviews. I've been meeting with the City Council on a regular basis to get their input. Even as late as last night, I was still getting input, and we've given you a sheet of late input that will be incorporated following today's meeting. We also want everybody to know that we had a survey van, we had a website, and we also received many common cards. And we will continue to do all of this and to notify the public. We've had great partners, and we will do everything possible in the spirit of the sunshine ordinance to let the public know about our plan. We also thought it was important to have some guiding principles that reflect the values as we have witnessed from the community input, from the discussions. Number one is, we have to do this together with the community and leverage resources. The solution lies in working together, so collaboration is key. We need to be efficient. Government as a whole needs to streamline operations and focus on how best to use our resources. We need to be focused on equity to make sure that our community gets the resources they need based on need, and based on a schedule, and based on what is best for the community. Excellence, we wanna have government and services that provide the best quality service to the public. We wanna be fiscally responsible. We wanna make sure that we have a stable environment for our fiscal health, we have adequate reserves. These are things that are very important. We wanna change, we wanna embrace innovation and creativity when we deliver our services, knowing that there's always another better way to do things, and to build upon our innovation and creativity and our successes. And number, last but not least, we wanna be transparent in our government. We wanna hold ourselves accountable, we want people to know what's going on, and we wanna be forthcoming in answering all the questions. Funding snapshot. The good news is that the vast majority of our strategies will use our existing resources. We have a very, very sizable city budget of $428 million, over $200 million in general funds. We have identified in unfunded strategies to date about 4.2 million. The good news is, we do have $2 million identified in the five-year forecast already, and I wanna emphasize is that $2 million a year, so that's a $10 million total. Some of the costs, the vast majority are recurring, some of them are one-time investments. We will recommend, the city manager, in April, allocation of funding based on the City Council input. It'll be in two categories, general consensus and then consensus, and then the council, of course, will have the final authority on what will be funded.
I'm sorry, Mr. Reyna. We'll wait till you get to your phone.
So this is the breakdown of the 102 funded strategies. Thirty-eight of them are unfunded, and there's a breakdown there, and also on your tables is a breakdown of the strategies by dollar amount, both unfunded and funded, and also recurring and one-time investments. What I'd like to do is focus on the slide that basically, I'm gonna use this slide. Mission statement is there in Spanish, but basically is to provide outstanding services to the community with economic prosperity, programs for the youth and quality of life for our residents, and also to make sure we do it in an efficient manner. We do have our goals, our objectives, and our strategies, and I wanna go to our first strategy and first goal, which is community safety, but before I do that, I just wanna emphasize that with every strategy, there are dozens of action steps, and there'll be literally hundreds of strategies and action steps for each of these programs once we get approval from the City Council. And that'll be the role of the different departments. So community safety is a major priority, and we have about a dozen strategies by example for the first community policing philosophy. We also wanna broaden communications, information sharing, promote fiscal accountability in the police department. It's very important that every department be held to the same standard as we do citywide, and I'm very happy to report that our chief is totally committed to doing this, and we wanna make sure we provide an excellent, high-quality service for our police and fire within Santa Ana. We also wanna have a sound fiscal policy for our jail. We've made a major headway working with the federal government to increase revenue, and also with our partners in the labor movement and our personnel department to reduce costs, and I feel very good about the future there, and that within the next month to six weeks, we should have good information about how we can improve our finances with regard to the jail operations. Youth and education is something that we need to focus on. We have the youngest population in Orange County. We need to have youth programming that's year-round. We need to encourage job training, so our youth have a future, and we need to do all of this in partnership with the schools and with the community-based organizations. Economic development is a hallmark of this mayor and council in this administration. We wanna have a vibrant business climate that's predictable, that provides certainty, that allows people to build and develop, and I'm very happy to report that there's major investment in Santa Ana that's occurring, but to help that even more is an update is necessary for our general plan and our zoning ordinance policies which need to occur. And I wanna go back to that last point, it's critically important that our business partners know that we're focused on saying yes and finding a solution to make sure they can expand and develop, and we wanna follow all of the regulations and make sure that the development is safe, but at the end of the day, we wanna be responsive to our partners in the development community. And I'm very happy to report that downtown Santa Ana is thriving, its sales taxes are higher than the citywide average, and we've had some exciting projects that have been announced with the redevelopment of the YMCA, and also the prospects for redevelopment of Third Street and Broadway Garage Project, and there's major investment occurring downtown. We are very stable financially in Santa Ana. We have a forecast that was approved unanimously by the City Council, which has a stable budget, which includes innovation and efficiency, which includes a very, very aggressive and achievable reserve policy. We're up already over $30 million, and we'll achieve $42 million within 12 months. So we have a good forecast, and we have a structurally balanced budget with appropriate reserve levels. Community health, livability, sustainability, quality of life in Santa Ana is what people are focused on, so we wanna make sure we have a good community engagement initiative, which is part of the strategic plan. We wanna have environmental sustainability, and we wanna improve the livability of Santa Ana neighborhoods. At the end of the day, what people really value in Santa Ana is the quality of life, and that's what our young people and our families are focused on. So we wanna promote not only things that are necessary for everyday living, but things that are important like the arts and culture and sister cities, and making sure that Santa Ana has something to offer everybody along the entire spectrum of income levels. We wanna focus on health. This is a major initiative to make sure we have opportunities for wellness and health, and it'll be part of the Santa Ana Healthy Initiative. Infrastructure, we have to maintain our investments in our infrastructure, our water, our streets, and we have plans to do that, and we need to make sure that we don't continue to have deferred maintenance. We need to make sure our buildings and our equipment are modern, and that's very important, and that's part of this plan. At the end of the day, the way we deliver services is through technology and infrastructure, but our people, and we wanna have employees that are focused on working with the community that are committed to providing outstanding services, and wanna attract the best employees who provide the best service. And so we gotta make sure that we do that, and that we're innovative and creative on how we pay people, and one of the things we need to focus on is compensation, but also pay performance, so that our best employees are rewarded for their efforts. And so, a culture of innovation and efficiency, a positive workplace environment, we have respect, and we honor our employees, and we recognize them for their achievements, and I believe at the end of the day, motivated employees will do so much better with regard to providing service to the public. We have to be accountable as we do this plan, and we have to measure our success, and we have to keep the community, but also our mayor and City Council informed, and so our monthly reports will be changed according to the strategic plan, and that's how we report, provide regular updates to the City Council as a whole during my individual meetings, and also through the subcommittees, which is outlined in the attachment, and we will review this process every year as part of the budget process, and if the budget is not supporting the plan, then we need to take a hard look at why that's not occurring. The next steps is to receive your input today, receive the input from the community, and make changes, and on March 18th, we'll present a revised plan. All I can say is, thank goodness we have a deadline, 'cause we could be at this for a long time if we didn't, but I will provide funding recommendations based on everything that I've heard, based on my individual discussions, and I will present that in two categories, consensus, youth and education, example. Everybody wants to do it, we include it. General consensus where there has been highly mentioned, but not everybody has supported it, so that'll be a general consensus. The goal would be that at a minimum, the consensus would be funded with the $2 million. Maybe we can work hard to find additional revenue, or if revenue is available, we can get it to some of the general consensus categories, so this should be a very, very serious thoughtful discussion. And then, after the city manager recommends, the council review and approve, and hopefully adopt an allocation in April, so that we can begin work. That concludes my presentation. Mayor Protem Tinerero.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I'd like to give the floor over to my handsome colleague, Councilmember Benavides, who is looking sharp this morning. Mr. Benavides, it's your floor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and I appreciate you sharing that description that you usually reserve for yourself, so today you're being free to share that, and I appreciate that. I wanna thank members of the community for taking the time on a Saturday to join us here today, and this very important and really historic gathering as we come together to begin to finalize a strategic plan, and I know a number of you have been a part of the process over the last year, and have championed the strategic plan coming to being adopted with an ordinance, and so it's just a very exciting time, and obviously, definitely wanna recognize and acknowledge and thank members of the council, my colleagues here. It's taken us a little while, some of us have been here, six, seven, eight years, and it took us a bit to be able to get us, get us here. Eight years, yeah. But, so it's an exciting time, and I think March 18th will be a day to celebrate as we adopt a final plan. Thank you also, City Manager, for your presentation, and I do have, and obviously, our staff, you know, who's worked extremely, extremely hard over the years, over the year, year and a half probably, to put this together. Couple of questions that I do have when it comes to, some more comments for, to be recorded and to be kept in mind as we move forward. Making sure that we have measurable goals, objectives, you know, that they're time-specific, that they do have, where there is that accountability piece. I know you mentioned, City Manager, the piece of accountability. I think, if you don't have a plan, as you mentioned, you failed, because you don't know where you're going, you're spinning your wheels. If you have a plan, but you put it up on a shelf and don't do much with it, it's pretty much the same thing. And if you don't, you know, follow and assess where you are, then it's not as effective as it could be. So I just wanna make sure that we do have that, that that's implemented, and that we follow up. Couple of items, I see that they're already in here, I'll just touch on them, but one is, I appreciate the fact that there was a new objective of reentry programs that was added for young people who coming back out into our community, into our city, that we wanna make sure that, as most, and many of them do desire to be productive members of society sometimes, and of our community, sometimes they don't necessarily have the support to be able to get there, appreciate us being able to add that in there. There was something simple that was also brought up before, or more recently, and the, as we moved towards being more healthy community, having priority for health and fitness, walkability, bike ability, something that I know Councilwoman Martinez has been very passionate and vocal about, there was a recent request by members of the community through online social media thread to discuss the need for more public bike racks to be able to allow for, and as we're promoting and encouraging people to get out on bikes, we also wanna make it so that there is a place for them to safely store, lock up their, that mode of transportation, so just wanted to reiterate that. I know I sent an email, and I got some feedback from our staff that we would be following up on that. One other element, when it comes to having just communities that are, housing I know is one of the pieces, both when it comes to new development, but also some of the housing stock that we do have is very dated. We do have some very dense communities, apartment communities, a number of which have landlords that are absentee landlords, and you can go as extreme as characterizing them as slumlords, where, and I've lived in a couple of those buildings here in our city not too far from where we are currently at the center, where you have a landlord who doesn't really care much to provide dignified housing, and I think as a council, that's something that we've been making a priority, is to provide dignified housing. We stress it when it comes to new quality of development that's affordable, but when we have some, again, housing stock that is dated, making sure that we have, that we apply some of the tools that we have when it comes to code enforcement inspectors, officers. I know that we've been short on those, we're beginning to replenish and staff up there. I just wanna make sure that we do have a goal, a strategy there to ensure that we deploy some of those inspectors, that we have that department that's staffed to the point where we can go out and ensure that we are inspecting some of these apartment buildings, that we are responsive, that we encourage members of residents of the community to give us a report, to let us know, because unless we do get that feedback, we don't know, and we don't know where to send our inspectors. So, looking at the prep program that I know we have, looking at where, how it's being effective, how we can enhance it, again, to be more responsive, and to ensure that we do have the staffing, the adequate staffing there for that. Community involvement has clearly been a significant priority for the council over the last few years. I mean, the fact that we're sitting here in this room, that we have this plan, demonstrates that. The next month, we're looking at potentially adopting a plan, and it's sort of the culmination of this process, but in reality, it's just the beginning, right? Once we have a plan. So, the idea of community involvement, I think, the community's been involved in planning. Now, it's, I think for us to figure out, how does the community continue to stay engaged and involved when it comes to the implementation piece? So, I know that there's been expressed interest by members of the community to be able to continue to be a part of that process, so whether it's ongoing reports, and ongoing dialogue, and feedback on how we're implementing, on assessing, I know that, and appreciate the fact that you mentioned that there are the monthly reports, everything, basically, now we're gonna have something to stock up against when it comes to budgeting priorities, when it comes to reports on what projects are, it's gonna be able to be reflected based on, and guided by the strategic plan, but something for us to consider, for council and staff considers, whether one of the charges of one of our existing commissions might be to regularly get kind of, get some of the reviews and updates that then would be able to report back to council, or whether it goes directly to council, or the other, but just ensuring that we do have opportunity for continued involvement in the part of the community. I stepped out for a second, and I don't know if it was already incorporated, but when we started talking about the street strategic plan, we talked about when it's a five-year plan, and it's more, to a certain degree, the way I've seen it is somewhat of a business plan, giving, having us focus goals, objectives, but we also, in our last budget as a council, gave direction and set aside funds for a broader vision plan, for about a 20-year plan, is it in there? Okay, all right, okay, thank you, Councilwoman Martinez, for addressing, making sure that that's, that it's there. Okay, fantastic. Couple last points that I had, based on the goals, let me get back to my notes. When it comes to the community safety, I appreciate that in objective one, modernizing the community policing philosophy, that's been one of the strong suits of our city. I think we've been a model department when it comes to community-oriented policing, one that's been looked at by other agencies, not only regionally, but throughout the country. As we've gone through some challenging times economically, as we've cut back on staffing and such, I think we've had to cut back on certain ways that we implement that strategy. So as we go forward, I just wanna ensure that we look at how we can continue to go back to maybe some of the director patrol units that were out there in the community, and just other ways that we can revisit, where we're reanalyzed, and then see how we can continue to be that model agency when it comes to community-oriented policing. A year ago, I had an opportunity to be a part of the Orange County Fire Authority Board representing our city as we went through a transition of our fire department to the OCFA. One of the things that I was very impressed by is the surveys, customer surveys, basically, and questionnaires that OCFA provides to members of the community that receive a call for service, and I know that now that continues to be a part of a fire service as OCFA is providing that, but as we go forward, it's something that I think we should consider when it comes to even our police service, ensuring that we have a level of feedback, opportunity for members of the public, accountability as well, and so that we can find out how we can better, just enhance our service. I think the, providing an actual, responding to an emergency and making a situation safe is obviously paramount, but the way that service is delivered also is a significant impact on how our residents feel about their city and how the city treats them. So, I appreciate that, and several, several goals, there was this emphasis on community service, I mean, on public service, customer service, so appreciate that. When it comes to the community-oriented policing, and then just public safety as a whole, something that we could consider going forward, and connected with the police chief bit about this, is having some type of a community task force of sorts, or advisory committee that can just, on a regular basis, give us input, representatives of different cross-sections throughout the city, I think would be a way for us to enhance that. In the economic development goal, you touched on the being solutions-based, and I very much appreciate, and I just wanted to, more than anything, make the comment to reinforce that, searching for ways to be able to say yes to, when it comes to new business or business expansion, not seeing ourselves as, and our city, city hall as gatekeepers, trying to make sure that people jump through certain hoops, and trying to make those hoops small, but doing the complete opposite, expanding and saying, we wanna be able to say yes, and help us to be able to guide you so you can come invest and grow and expand your business within our city. And that, for now, basically wraps up my specifics points. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Do you have any questions to the city manager?
You know, right now, I don't, it's more than anything feedback and input that I wanna be able to provide. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Benavides. Now with the wise one, Councilman Roman Reyna, so you have the floor.
Appreciate it, thank you so very much. Again, echoing my colleagues, the process, the staffing, time and energy, and this is absolutely phenomenal. It really is historic that it hasn't taken place virtually 50 years in our community, so the fact that we're moving in this direction is huge for our city. Do have a few kind of recommendations. Speaking to the mic, sure, not a problem. I guess the first one would be, Santa Ana being the youngest, one of the youngest cities in the nation as far as our population. Today's individuals, this age group, they think differently, they talk differently, they communicate differently, they do commerce differently, and it's all virtual, it's all online. I think we need to have a higher emphasis on utilizing technology, and should be integrated in virtually everything that we're talking about. I do see some parts in here, I think it should be more included across the board. I think it should be more included across the board for communicating as far as what activities are taking place in our community. Communicating with our business entrepreneurs of what the process is and what access they can get to permits or forms prior to actually coming to city hall. Expanding, and I know we're moving in that direction of getting more wifi out into the community, into city facilities. It'd be great to have the entire city be wifi. How police officers track their data as well. I mean, so when we talk about technology, there are so many tools and resources there that it truly is beyond me. Today's kids can put their hand in their pocket with their cellphone and send emails and communicate and text and I'm busy looking at every single thing that I'm doing. So it's traditional and non-traditional. And some of that non-traditional approach is going to be growing pains for our seniors, for our elders, including myself, because we're just not used to operating or thinking that way. But to be ahead of the curve, we need to intentionally do so. So I think we need to focus a little bit more on the technology aspect of it. Love the fact that we included our senior citizens. I think in the first couple of drafts, we weren't really focusing on our senior citizens. I think they have a world of experience and knowledge, are one of our greatest natural resources that we need to continue to tap into. So I'm glad that we're really focusing and targeting on that. When we start talking about economic development, one of the things that I hadn't seen in here is a focus on manufacturing. Again, with the economy today, a lot of our manufacturing jobs have been shipped overseas and a lot of our population, our working community really have those type of skills. And we need to figure a way to continue to captivate those jobs here. We need to be aware as we continue to rezone certain areas for certain reasons that we still allot X amount of space specifically for manufacturing. We definitely need to continue to cultivate our blue collar workers. They really are a backbone of our community. Let's see, the economics, staffing, echoing a lot what Councilman Benavides was talking about with our youth programs and our COP and how we really communicate with our law enforcement to our residents. Again, and I would even go as far as we need to intentionally train our law enforcement officers how to interact in the day of instant information. Everybody out there has a camera and is able to go up viral really quick. I'm not saying that our staff are doing anything negative, but you definitely need to be aware of them being on camera, what that looks like. Sometimes it's just perception because of the angle. But I think we need to really enhance our staffing with some of these trainings. And to me, there's just not enough that we could do for investing in our young people. Again, youngest community, if we put all of our budget in there, I don't think it would be enough. They are our future. We definitely can continue to invest in them in all aspects of their growth, whether it be job trainings and internships, whether it be entrepreneurs and supporting entrepreneurs, young entrepreneurs trainings, whether it be getting the kids that, I was late today because I went to Saturday school, the kids that missed detention, that got assigned to Saturday school. Those are the kids that are one of the most troubled and challenged. And I go there twice a year, twice a month to try to help them out. That demographic needs some attention as well in whatever form that may look like. And for now, kind of a mouthful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wise One, I appreciate your time. We are going to go over to Councilwoman Martinez, the vibrant one, who is ready to take the floor. It's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor Prochambina Harold. Before I begin though, I do want to put something on the record for Councilwoman Amesqua, who was unable to attend, and she sent me the information that she would like for me to put on the record. And here are a few points that she would like to ask to be put on the record. And again, I think both of our colleagues here already talked about that and it's just making sure that we allocate the appropriate funds for youth programs, safety, arts and culture. And as with respect with youth programs, she would like to see if the city can explore internship opportunities with the private sector and the school district. We also need to consider strengthening our gang intervention programs, given the number of gang-related homicides we've had since the beginning of this year. And finally, I want the city to continue to foster and promote arts and culture in the city of Santa Ana. And that's from Councilwoman Amesqua. I told Mayor Prochambina Harold if he wanted to start and also Councilman Sarmiento, because I have a lot to say, I think, you know, not only being on the ad hoc committee, but how we got to the strategic, you know, plan and, you know, I've been advocating for this plan since I've got elected and I know Councilman Benavides as well. And, you know, it was long overdue. We're now here eight years. We tend to think that we've only been here six years, but this is our actual, our eighth year in office. And I want to commend, one, my colleagues here today for moving us in this direction. But two, I want to also thank our staff. You know, we've gone through a lot of changes. I also want to thank our consultants and I see Ms. Upton Graff here as well. And I want to thank the community for all the input and dedication that you've put to holding not only city government accountable, but yourselves accountable to wanting to improve, you know, this community. So with that being said, you know, giving my thanks, I, you know, I do have a lot of points. I do want to mention the things that are currently not included. But I'll start off with, you know, something that is not included. And I asked our city manager and I know our finance and our personnel director. And that is to the point of what are we going to do in regards to possibly doing a pension finance plan with our unfunded liability? We all know that we have issues in regards to that. And it's really more so of the velocity of when people decide to retire. And then the issues with salaries as we move forward here as a city and dealing with our labor union contracts, we need to assure that as we see retirements coming forward, that if there are going to be any salary increases, that can really put us in a very interesting position. And I think we have to do a lot more, you know, analysis. But at the end of the day, I really believe that, you know, the two years that we have been negotiating, this was the first two-year contract with some of our bargaining units, that we continue to do that. When we enter into five-year agreements with some of our bargaining units, we really could put ourselves in a very difficult position because we don't know where we're at as it pertains to, you know, how many people are retiring. One example, I think last year, and Mr. Wright, you can prove me if I'm wrong, but I think 57 people retired last year. So within the next five years, we're going to have a lot more folks retiring. We're not hiring that many people to pay into the system. And so that is a problem for us here as a city. We have things under control at this point. And, you know, our city manager sent an email out to my colleagues. But as we move forward, we need to figure out how can we create some kind of financial plan to, you know, figure out if we're either going to go out and possibly get some bonds to pay down our unfunded liability, you know, we got to look at the market or look at being very strategic of how we deal with our bargaining unit in the future. Because that's going to be very important. And I say this because we need to have sustainability. Many of us, if we're elected this November, we only have four more years left in office. There's going to be a big shift of new elected officials coming here. And so if we don't have any defined plans, in particular in regards to this issue, it really can cause problems for the future of the city of Santa Ana. And I want to make sure that we have stability whether I'm here or not. So I want us to consider setting some policies as we deal with the unfunded liability for pensions. The next thing that I wanted to talk about, and I want to thank our staff because I too, like Councilman Benavides, as we look at this and we move forward and whatever we decide, wanting to assure that there is accountability, not only from our city staff, but also from the council here and having measurable outcomes. We need to make sure that we measure all of this, what's working, what's not working. So as we move forward with these plans and with other forms of funding, that we understand as a body that we may not want to move forward with certain youth programs or other programs within the city and create new ones. But we need to make sure that we're measuring them so that they're effective and efficient. And if we don't know that and we don't monitor that, we really could lose sight. And many times as government, we tend to do that. We've had programs in place for many years and we never figure out or do an assessment if these programs are working or not. We need to make sure any new program or program that we currently have now, that we understand and assess them to make sure that they are not only working for our employees here at the city of Santa Ana, but they're also working for the business community and the residents. Next, I also wanted to discuss, you know, and I know there's a possibility, he mentioned the amount, you know, we, of unfunded costs, it's about the 38, it's about almost $5 million. We're not going to be able to do that, you know, here for the first two years. It's $2 million for the next five years for a total of $10 million. And so as our city manager mentioned, the general consensus, you know, we're going to move forward here, possibly not today, but as we go back in the next couple of weeks before we bring this back to the council, I think March 18, we're going to figure out, you know, what are we going to want to invest, you know, these dollars in what programs and projects. But those that are still considered a high priority to this council, I would like for us to consider moving forward with creating a council work plan with a high priority and priority for future funding. So, you know, we're not going to be able to fund this, but I think if we all could agree as a group, we decide what we want to fund for the first two years of the five-year, $10 million. Anything else that is not funded for the following years, you know, some things are going to be reoccurring. So we have to keep that in mind and we have to add that. But things that are not reoccurring and we have future monies, we want to assure that we have consensus here that it's a top priority or just a priority. And then we can let staff move forward as money comes in to move forward with those priorities that we have already set for future years. Because there may be possibility, as our city manager mentioned, he may, you know, be able to get more money. And, you know, instead of us stalling and coming back, if we set these priorities, he can get going with his staff. And I think that's the most appropriate way that we should conduct ourselves and let the community know that we're moving forward with what we made a commitment to. Next, I wanted to discuss as we talked about, you know, building a healthier community. In certain point, I, you know, and I've made mention to our city manager and our planning staff, and it's not included, is that I want to make sure as we, when we update the general plan, that we have health in all policies. So wanting to make sure that we incorporate that, there's possibly very minimal costs and the California Endowment is willing to assist us with technical assistance. And so I want to make sure that we include that as we update the general plan. And then next, I know Councilman Benavides talked about the active transportation component, more so on bicyclists. And I know today we're having a bike safety forum. As we move forward with doing our pedestrian and bike master plan and circulation element plan, we need to make sure that we incorporate safety. Safety is very vital across the United States. You know, this issue is being discussed as more people are going to start to, you know, walk and bike. We need to make sure we have the appropriate facilities for them to be safe and secure, you know, here in our city. And so wanting to make sure that we add to the component of creating an active transportation safety plan. I know our Parks and Rec director is already head of the game and he's already going to start his, you know, bike safety program. But we need to make sure that we coordinate with our police department and others and public works and planning to create this entire safety plan for all active transportation. And so I would like for that to be included. And I'm not sure if we would be able to utilize the money that we currently have now or we may need new money. So I'd like to ask our city manager to go back and see what that would cost for us to create that plan. And then I also wanted to talk about, you know, restorative justice programs. And I know both of them mentioned that and I'm very supportive of those programs. But I want us to also consider as we move forward with these kinds of programs, possibly doing a health impact assessment. And the reason why I say that is because we need to identify current areas with restorative justice programs. Where are some of the, you know, I know our police department and others may know where are certain hotspots. But there are, you know, we're a pretty big city, even though we're 26.7 square miles, we're, you know, a pretty big city. We have a lot of youth here. And so we want to be very strategic of how we end up utilizing our funds. And so we need to do assessment, we just can't put money in certain areas. We need to figure out what are the key problems and identify them with the facts that we receive from our police department, from our school district, from probation. So we need to go out there and do the assessment. It's not only with our police department, we have to focus with probation, with the county, with the school district. And to do that, you would have to do a larger assessment to understand, you know, the root cause of these problems and then how can we put preventative measures. And so I want us to think about that as well and what that would cost. And I know there's currently a grant available for local municipalities and I'm going to be sending that to our city managers, $100,000 to do one of these. And so I think it's a perfect opportunity and we have to do matching funds. And so a lot of the stuff that we're already doing with youth, we will be able to utilize those matching funds if we were to receive this grant. Next, I wanted to also see as we talk about, you know, facilities for bike and pedestrians, in the part of that you provided us under community facilities and infrastructure, as we're doing all these plans and we're pretty much wrapped up with our circulation element, bike and pedestrian and also doing complete streets this year, those plans are going to be set and within the circulation element. I think we already have a couple of selection designated areas that the community has looked of where we actually can increase class one bike lanes. So what we don't want to just do now here is approve to do these plans and then not have any infrastructure behind it after these plans are completed. And so I want to see if our public works and planning staff can, you know, come with some kind of plan back to us and what it would cost to increase about 10 to 15 miles of class one bike lanes in our collector's street. And then number two, from a regional perspective, the OCTA just finished its first and second districts bikeways master plan. And they have one project that is a top priority and that is the Pacific Electric Rideaway, which is in connection with Santa Ana and Garden Grove, where they, where we possibly can do a bike trail as well there. And that is the number one project that the community and both these districts said it's a top priority. So if we could take a look at that and what that would possibly cost us to do, and that's considered class two, which is on road. And then as well, bike lockers. I am in support of bike racks, but in certain areas, you know, where there's not high visibility of safety, it's very easy to steal a bike from a bike rack. And so I think we need to start looking at designated areas to do bike lockers. And I've talked to our city manager about this. So if we can identify possibly four areas of where we can put bike lockers and what that cost would be, would be greatly appreciated. I told you guys I had a lot to say, I'm still not finished. So I'm going to now, you know, come to, I have a question. And so page one of 13, under the community safety, point A, under the number two, objective broadening communications, information sharing and community awareness for public activities. A, it says, purchase and implement new software system for police department to improve productivity, increase efficiencies and transparencies, $225,000, it's unfunded. I was just wondering if someone could please expand on that? Because I know with the technology and the amount of money that we have spent over the years, most of that money has gone to our police department. So I'm just trying to figure out what the need is here for the $225,000.
Thank you for that question. We have had discussions with the chief, we'll get more specific information. But at the end of the day, one of our biggest shortfalls is we do not have electronic ticketing. And electronic ticketing is something that is critical to our success. It saves a tremendous amount of time. The jurisdiction I came from implemented it, it was very, very efficient. Councilwoman Martinez, so that's the focus. Well, just be more specific, yes.
Just be more specific and put electronic ticketing, then that would.
That's one of the components, there may be others, but that's.
And then on number one, modernize the community policing. I just want to thank, thank you and our police chief for making the downtown a commitment with safety and the video surveillance. We're going to be, you know, possibly if this council supports it, $400,000 for that. And so I think we're moving in the right direction, the positive direction as we move forward also with our branding. And so I just want to thank you guys for that and including that.
If I could, because that's such an important area. The downtown is indicative of the health of a community and the health of Orange County. And so the recommendation there is to add resources to the downtown, but not to detract from any other part of the city.
Great, thank you. And now I'm going to take you guys to page three of 13. And now I'm going to take you guys to page three of thirteen, with this, which is youth education and recreation. Actually, you know, before I go that, I totally forgot, under community safety and then within the downtown, and maybe I can just add it to economic development, but I'll just mention those points now, is that I'm wanting to make sure that we're able to incorporate, you know, the wellness corridor within the downtown as we upgrade our facilities, our signage, you know, and some of our street landscape, that we work with the wellness corridor, we made a commitment to do so, we were all out there, and so that is part of the downtown, and wanting to assure that the wellness corridor is included as they move forward with their plans, to do that corridor in the next couple of years. So now I'm gonna take you to the youth and education, and I have a couple of questions, and I'm excited that the amount of money that if we do decide what kind, what we're investing in our youth, we certainly, as Councilman Reyna said, we certainly could invest a lot more, but I think this is a positive step that we are taking, and I'm excited about it. But I have some questions, because again, I want us to make sure that we're able to measure and be very strategic in how we utilize our funds, you know. And if we look at, you know, the first objective on page three of thirteen, it says convene a summit with partners, so that, it's pretty much nonprofit organizations, our school sectors and colleges, et cetera. We're wanting to, you know, convene a summit, and then we also want to do an evaluation of youth program services for another twenty-five thousand dollars. And then, and then again, we want to offer new camping, no, I'm sorry, I'm good with that, convene a summit for youth focusing on mentor and social and college, it seems like we're kind of duplicating a lot of these things, and so maybe if we can just create a comprehensive plan, and if we're able to bring all these stakeholders together, I don't think that we need to invest all this money, and we can utilize, possibly putting some of that money in more of the sport intermural programs versus, you know, a lot of this planning, because I think we can get it done on one shot. So I just wanted to bring that forward, and then as well, develop a civic program to implement Parks Recreation and Community Service for a hundred thousand dollars. Civic awareness is very important, and I just want to iterate that it's important not only for our youth, but all residents as well, so that it's open to everyone. I think it's important as we move forward. And then, you know, I'm really excited about expanding the youth programs and recreational opportunities. If we can expand a little more on this, possibly not now, but what sport programs we're actually gonna commit to, because we can't commit to all of them, right, to do all of them, and if we are, is that the reason why, or how many schools? So if we could get a little more specific, it'd be...
Rookie ball, baseball, playing football, basketball.
Okay, so those are, so we already chosen three.
We have the schools identified, the locations, the actual activities, and to Mayor Portem Tenahero's point, we are able to provide individual briefing, so you have the specific information, and we do have that information available.
Great, thank you. And then I'm now moving to the economic development component, five of thirteen, and I see we're gonna invest if we all decide to come up and, you know, and make economic development a top priority, I certainly know that it's a top priority of mine, and so I'm glad that, you know, we've come to this amount, and hopefully that a majority of this money would go towards economic development, but as we move forward with completing our economic development strategy, I'm wanting to make sure that as we move forward with this, that we're able to possibly not move so quickly if we decide to do these other strategies. I know there's some funding to it, I think, you know, we should look at doing our economic development strategy, and then whatever comes out of that strategy, decide, you know, what are some top priorities? I know Councilwoman Reyna mentioned manufacturing, you know, what are gonna be the job sectors, the clusters that we're going to be focused on? As we look at our tax revenue, we certainly understand twenty-six-point-five percent of that is auto sales, is transportation, and so we need to look very closely and work with our Work Investment Board, you know, of how we're going to be able to have a strategy to either increase that or find other ways to look at, the second one, which I think is nineteen-point-six, if I'm correct, is hotel tax. And you talked about our downtown and moving forward, are we going to be able to, wanting to support more of a hospitality as we move forward, as you look at our downtown and all the food establishments that are coming in, that we provide economic opportunities, but job opportunities that are tied to this economic development strategy is going to be important as well, and so I just want us to be cognizant of that, that we need to do the comprehensive plan first, and I'm excited that we're moving and wanting to support the Chamber of Commerce and the other businesses to do the rest of the programming, and I'm certainly very supportive of the branding, and I know we're gonna be investing the fifty thousand dollars, and I know Councilman Benavides has been pushing that for a very long time as well, and I think it's important that we do that, but again, take a pause, and as we do the economic development strategy and bringing these people, I know on Monday we have our Finance Economic Development Committee, and there we're gonna be making a recommendation to the full council to establish a business advisory ad hoc that would be essentially undertaking the economic development strategy with our city staff, and so I just want us to keep that in mind. And then as we, you know, six of thirteen, I'm still there, if we look at objective number four, I'm just gonna just reiterate with the wellness corridor, that if we can include them in number A, and I mentioned in the back where we're doing street and sidewalk design and lighting, that we have open communication with Latino Health Access and the Wellness Corridor with some of their needs and how we can work with one another to incorporate some of their designs and where lighting is needed. And then the use of technology, I've asked for us to do some possibly wayfinding and other applications for our downtown, and including them as well, because we're gonna have walking sites for the Wellness Corridor, and as we made a commitment to partnering up with them, this is a perfect opportunity to also invest in their efforts as well. And then I also wanted to highlight in number F, that we are wanting to commit twenty-five thousand dollars, and we've talked about this in the past, Mr. City Manager, is possibly doing promotions with MetroLink of how we can get people coming to the first, you know, of the month artist walk, or, you know, during Fiesta Spatios, where people can use public transportation and doing promotions and promoting our businesses in downtown, or even in other parts of either South Main or Bowers Museum, whatever have you, that we're able to promote, and having people from across the region use MetroLink to come down here and possibly getting shuttles to bring them to those destination spots is another opportunity for us to really showcase what we're doing with the business community. And I know we recently had discussions with OCTA with our staff just a couple days ago. And I am now page eight of thirteen. And again, I know you're probably gonna expand when we have one-on-one meetings, the development of a community volunteer coordinator program for a hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. I just, I want more information before I make a decision to wanting to invest that. Again, I want us to be very strategic and intelligent in how we move forward with creating a program like this, because it will be reoccurring, and so just wanting to make sure that it will be successful. And then I also wanted to talk about, you know, the, I know we've been working on a city climate action plan for a while, and we've had certain partners, we haven't seen any reports, and I know here on number two, you know, we're asking for, it's unfunded, but a hundred thousand dollars to, you know, to look at water conservation and other buildings and communities, so if we can just expand, because I know we've been dealing with this issue for quite some time, and I know this is something that the mayor and many of the council members have been very supportive of, but just, you know, why would we need this hundred thousand dollars, and just so if we can be more specific, I would greatly appreciate it. And then I am gonna go off to page ten of thirteen, and objective number six. I have a question on number C as well, where it says, "Integrate a variety of health and wellness programs into existing programs for each community recreation centers," and it says, "Develop Jerome Park, Morrison Park health access points." Just wanting to know why those two specific areas, because I think as we move forward that there are a lot of other areas, and, you know, I'm assuming our Parks and Rec directors picked those both areas specifically for certain reasons based on the data that he has, but just more information so that we can make an assessment, because we all have parks and other recreation centers within our districts as well, and so wanting to know why is he focusing on those two, so that would be greatly appreciated. And then...
Morrison, Madison.
Madison, oh, sorry. It says Morrison Park though, Hidaldo.
I'm sorry.
It says, okay.
Jerome and Madison.
Okay, Jerome and Madison, but it's...
Even a better point that you made.
Okay, thank you for clarifying, but it did said Morrison Park. And then on page eleven of thirteen, this has also been a big priority of mine, and this is really community facilities and infrastructure. And I'm gonna end with this, I'm almost done here, I'm gonna end with this, is that, and I know Councilman Reyna mentioned about our seniors, and I'm glad that we've included, because when I saw the first time around that there was not much in our seniors, I wanted to add that, you know, if you looked at one of our, we're at one of these facilities here, we haven't had any renovations here in quite a while, nor at the other facility, and our seniors play a major role, like any other member or community resident here in this community, and so if we can look at our capital improvement program or additional monies within our general fund to do capital improvement, that it becomes a top priority. I know we've renovated a lot of our community centers, like Jerome Center, Salvador Park, we only have two senior centers, and so we should do the best that we can from our ability to make sure that, you know, they're in great condition, because many of our seniors and other community members utilize these centers. And then, you know, we don't go into detail here, but I know there's, you know, it doesn't highlight where the, you know, most of this money, is it coming from the general fund, or is it coming from grants or CDBG? Can you, if you can, you know, as when we have one-on-one, if you can please specifically be able to target, so I know where the funding's coming from, because again, as we move forward with CDBG, I'm wanting to make sure the council has priorities, I know the city has priorities as well, you know, with continuing to, you know, service, you know, some of the city's programs, but I think many of us have talked in the past about wanting to support nonprofit organizations through CDBG, and so as we move forward, and we're putting a lot of this possibly within our five-year strategic plan, we may be able to use some of those CDBG funds to help other nonprofits and continue to use our general fund, the monies that we have today, to help with youth programs and library services. And then the last thing in regards to economic development, I mentioned it to some of my colleagues, as we move forward with doing, you know, our streetcar, and fairly soon we're gonna be doing our, it'll be coming to the council to figure out a, an alternative of where we're gonna design the streetcar or what area, I'm wanting to make sure that if we could possibly partner up with the city of Garden Grove, and I know we have a partnership, it's called the Santa Ana Garden Grove Project, but as we look at other economic development opportunities, and on the west end with our Harbor Pacific Plan, that will be coming before us as well, fairly soon to the council, that we look at partnering up and possibly doing a JPA, and doing some kind of analysis of how we can utilize the Willowick Golf Course, I know it's in the city of Santa Ana, it's a hundred acres, but the city of Garden Grove owns it, and so we've had many discussions over the years, but I think if we can partner, have a true partnership with the city of Garden Grove and enter into a JPA, and figure out what kind of economic opportunities we both can really take advantage of, would benefit not only the city but Garden Grove as well, and so I want us to think about that. And the last thing is I, possibly us as well, joining, and I mentioned to a couple of you at our last council meeting when we were leaving our closed session, possibly joining the ACOC, which is really the new Orange County's legislative, California League of Cities component that they have here for Orange County, if we possibly can join that, which would help us with our relationships as we move forward, and helping our mayor at OCTA move, you know, the priority of this streetcar here for Santa Ana, move it much quicker, so we're gonna have to look at other strategies, and I think this is one good strategy for us to possibly join this association, because half of those board members sit on OCTA now, and we need to build better relationships, and so I want us to consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez, the vibrant one. We appreciate your time and your comments. We now move to the debonair one, Mr. Vincent Sarmiento.
Well, thank you, Mayor Portem, I've been called much, much worse, so, well, you know, there's not much more to be said about this, I think it's all been said, I think whatever I say will be certainly surplus and excess, but let me try. I just want to thank everybody for being here today, but also participating in the process, and that means the public, that means, you know, the groups that have helped us along with this, Sacred, Calm Link, I see friends of both organizations there, Madison Park from the neighborhoods, South Main, many good friends that have helped us through this process, and I think as council members previous to me said, this has been a long process. I mean, it's been a long, specific process for the discussions on this, but this has been a multi-year process, I think that began when we first started as young council members, and we thought, look, there should be a vehicle that the public can engage with us and tell us what their priorities are. It's never been seen in the, you know, in the history of the city, I've lived here all my life, and I've never been engaged by the public, nobody's ever called me or told me and said there's a forum, there's a survey, there's something that you can do to become involved, so this is really a first new step, and it is very exciting, and very few cities give their public this opportunity, and I'm just glad that we all were able to get to this point, because it's not a difficult, it's not an easy place to be. I think as was said as well by our city manager, this is a very imperfect process. We're trying to do something which is pretty difficult, which is to get the hopes and dreams and the priorities of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand residents into one document and say, this is what we want to do. So it is our first venture out into something that's very hard to do, but I'm just glad we're taking that first step, because as we continue on with these steps, I think the process is gonna be better, more effective, more efficient, but we have to try and make this one as successful as we possibly can. I want to remind us that this is a living document, this is not something that, you know, is set in stone, and once it's written, and, you know, we've mentioned some things in there, we can't be flexible on that, and I think that's what we want in a document, just for it to be fluid, for it to include some of our priorities, these should include our guiding principles, this should tell us basically where we want to go, but it should never confine us. We have many documents that we're obligated to produce, whether it's, you know, a housing element or documents like that, and what they are is they give us a roadmap, but if we have to deviate on some things, we should have the flexibility to do that, so I'm hoping we're reminded of that. And, you know, as Councilmember Martinez was going through the summary of the unfunded costs, you know, I look at the, I look at the document and I, you know, it's hard to find anything to say, this is horrible, it shouldn't be in here, there's certainly a lot of good things in here, but we realize that this isn't, you know, a moment to say, let's just throw everything at this problem and let's use this sort of kitchen sink approach. I want us to be a little bit more thoughtful, we can't fund everything, and I hope we're all realistic about that, that we at some point have to, you know, decide what are the most important things that we're looking at. So one thing I'm glad about is that we went to the community first and waited to hear from you what your priorities were. It gives us a much better sense of what is important to us, as opposed to us driving this, you drove this. And so, you know, speaking to the public, I certainly appreciate that, that gave me a lot of guidance, and it will give me a lot of guidance as I go through this, because I hope I'm not expected to go through it line by line, because I'm just not that fast of a reader, and I don't do math as well. So I'll go through it, and I'm going to look at it, but I'm gonna incorporate what I've heard from the community, so, you know, that's how I'm gonna go through my deliberations and when I speak to my... So, you know, that's how I'm gonna go through my deliberations and when I speak to my colleagues and when I speak to, to the staff. So I just wanna remind us, I'm gonna speak at very, you know, broad strokes, remind us, what is it that we do as a city? Our traditional functions is what we should be thinking about. We're supposed to provide public safety, you know, a high quality of life, good infrastructure, and all those things I think that cities provide. It's great to wanna do a lot of different things, but, you know, unfortunately, those aren't the traditional, conventional functions of a city. And we, we wanna keep, we wanna make sure that what cities do, we do well. And so as much as I'd like to do everything under the sun, we can't. And we wanna be intelligent with our limited monies. I mean, two million sounds like a lot of money, it's really not. And we have to look at, I think, bigger vision things that will, that will make us successful. When we talk about economic development, a lot of people say, "Well, why are we gonna do that? That doesn't sound like a good program." Well, if we want good public safety, if we want good infrastructure, if we want good youth programs, if we want things, if we don't have the revenue that's being generated in the city, how are we gonna fund all those things that we wanna do? Good public services have to come from some resource. And generating sales, generating jobs, those are things that generate money for us to be able to provide quality service. So I just want us to think about sort of the larger, larger vision here. On some of the specifics, when we're talking about youth programs, I'm all for youth programs, I think they're a good thing, but I'd like to see some larger, more developed youth programs. I think there was some mention from my conversations with Sacred about internships. And I had an opportunity to speak with the mayor as well. I know when I was a young man, I think I was in junior high, so I guess I was a young boy, I did an internship here in Public Works, and I worked here for a summer. I wasn't paid, it wasn't anything that was compensated, but I received valuable, valuable experience. And I saw what a government, what government does. And so that was life-changing and formative for me. And there's a lot of people who went through internship programs like that, that I think that created and inspired us to do things in public service. So let's look at those life-changing experiences that maybe aren't a day, but maybe are a period of time that will change a person in their formative years. And that's, that's something I can get behind. When we talk about youth sports, I know our, our Parks and Recs director reminds me all the time, what's the number one sport in the city? Soccer. Soccer. As much as we love baseball, as much as we love football, I love, you know, my son plays tennis, I love tennis, but soccer is the dominant sport here. And I think we, you know, need to mention it specifically. Unfortunately, I think it's absent from here, but it's, you know, it's something I know that we're going through deliberations here, but that has to be mentioned. There's such a scarcity of field space for that, that, you know, we can't use our priorities to, to, to force the issue. We have to see, what is it that our youngsters are doing? And what they do is play that sport. And I'm trying to work with some investors right now who are trying to buy up some warehouse space to do indoor soccer. It's a very unconventional way of looking at soccer, but we have a, a large inventory of warehouse space. I know we passed an ordinance not too long ago which allows for that use in an industrial area. Anaheim does it, Garden Grove does it. It's a great generator of revenue for them, and it's a way to solve their park poor problems just like ours. But I'm gonna wrap up by just saying, thank you for incorporating in the addendum, Mr. City Manager, a mention of three things that are important to me. And one of them is, you know, as much as I love downtown, as much as I frequent downtown, as much as I think downtown is a, is a, is a, one of the heartbeats of the city, it's not the only heartbeat in the city. And I think that for us to become myopic and say, "Look, down, the way downtown goes is the way the city goes," that's not true. Our number one generator of sales is the auto mall. We have Westfield Main Place Mall, that's another big priority. But what we're overlooking is an opportunity here with another corridor that is just as viable as a downtown if we invest in it, which is South Main. And, and if you wanna talk about what's important to a, to a classic city, downtown Main Street. Downtown Main, Main Street in any city is where things should be focused. So I hope, as we have failed in the past to, to invest the money that was rightfully theirs through redevelopment, as we get some more of the funding back for them, let's look at that corridor. Let's look at revitalizing that corridor because if we were successful in, in downtown, we can be successful in South Main. And I, I completely believe that. The other priority for me is libraries. One of the things that I think we've overlooked is that we have one central library and one very small satellite library on New Hope. Unfortunately, the, the homeless problem in the, in the civic center prevents a lot of families to go and visit our, our Main Street, our, excuse me, our main library in the civic center. But, but now libraries have changed. They're not books, they're not huge buildings. They're virtual libraries, they're technology libraries, they're spaces that are relatively small like this room where you fill with computers and they become technology spaces, they become virtual spaces where kids can find books and resources and research on a computer. And it's much easier to do than what we once thought of libraries. So we don't need that same large footprint, we don't need a lot of brick and mortar. You know, we tried to do libraries, and I know Councilmember, Mayor Protem Tena Herros, one of his priorities when he came on this council was to do libraries. And I remember, we were doing libraries at the, at the schools. And we would, we would comp, we would pay for additional hours of library time on the campuses. Unfortunately, it, it wasn't working. I think what we need to do is we need to bring the libraries to the students. I think we can do that. There's a few community centers in the city that will have spaces available like this. Let's look at that. That's something that we, you know, we might wanna consider. And I know that we spoke about the fixed guideways, so that was one of the things I was gonna speak about as well, because those are transformative projects. Those are projects that are gonna change the way the city is done. So those are my things. I just wanna thank my colleagues, I wanna thank the staff for taking so much time and effort and resources of theirs to invest. The committee did great work, I think it was a great start. But I want us to think about, as we deliberate with ourselves and with the staff, when we propose something, and what I'm trying to do with myself is discipline myself, is when I propose something, I wanna say, "Well, how much does it cost and what's it gonna take away from?" Because this is a fixed amount. So if we, if we fund one thing, it's at the expense of something else. So let's make sure that we balance our interests well. And, you know, one thing is great, you know, does it outweigh the need for maybe additional public safety services? Does it outweigh the need for services to seniors? Does it outweigh the need for the importance of trying to resolve the homeless issue in our city? Those are all things that we need to ask ourselves as we do this. Look, I like certain things, I, you know, I'd certainly like to push them, but I always try to challenge myself and say, "Well, is it more important than something else?" So, you know, I want that to be sort of our way of proceeding as we go down this path. But, but thank you all for helping us get to this point, all of you who've played a role in changing the direction of the way the city operates. It's an exciting time, it's your city, this is your vision, and I'll, hopefully we'll be able to implement it with, with respect to everything that you've told us. Thank you.
Councilman Sarmiento, offline, I'd be very curious to hear about what public works agency was back in the horse and buggy days?
Oh, no. You know, we were still, we were still building traditional libraries back then. That's how far back we go. Man, I know.
So we're gonna go from the debonair to myself. My students call me Mr. T., it stands for Tina Herro, but sometimes for terrific. So I just wanna, you know, I, we, it's, we're here on a Saturday, might as well have a little fun while we're doing it. But first and foremost, thank you, staff, and thank you, residents, for coming out. Residents, I need to let you know, though, when the council, the, I call us the 'oh-sixers', when we first got in here in 'oh-six, you wouldn't have this. There was no opportunity for any public discussion to come in and make any changes because our leadership at the time was very much, it was a very centrist form of leadership, and it was controlled by one member of our, of our council and, and a few members of our, our city manager along with a couple of other staff members. And quite frankly, many people in our staff were choked, they couldn't speak, they couldn't do their jobs because they were forced to do the work of a few. Here we are, fast forward to today. This took a tremendous undertaking to change our city manager, to change our infrastructure from within, took very, took many sleepless nights. I know Councilmember Ben Avides and I had many talks, along with other council members up here with me, and it was not an easy day. I think I'm gonna die one year sooner because of the stress that came about. So on, on, at my funeral, I want you to come in and say, "Mr. Tina Herro should've lived one year longer." But in, in, in moving forward and changing...
On behalf of all the staff, we do not want that to happen, and we're gonna try and get that year back.
We're trying to get that year back, there you go. But I just want, I'm, I'm saying that because we quickly forget, we live in a society in an age now where it's not, "What have you done for me lately?", it's, "What are you doing for me tomorrow?" And you forget of how difficult things were to create change. Change is not easy. I applaud my colleagues, I'm proud to be on the same dais with these individuals because there is one thing people can't say about this council, they cannot say, "We're, we are a do-nothing council." This is a do-something council. And here we are, here we are, finally, finally, we're getting a strategic plan together. And as we worked as a team to create change within the city, let's work as a team to create services for our community that did not exist. There was a lot said today, I could sit here and pinpoint it, but quite frankly, there is a lot of areas that I agreed with a lot of my colleagues. I agree with Councilmember Ben, Ben Avides, and I appreciate the fact that he's talking about dignified housing. Some people like the word affordable housing, I like dignified housing. You know, it, dignified housing creates students who graduate from college and come back to the city and give back to the city. We cannot have brain drain. Brain drain is when you have someone that graduates from college and they go live somewhere else, and they take their talents elsewhere. I wanna look at Councilmember Ben Avides, he grew up in East LA, his talents are being served here in the city of Santa Ana. We wanna create people that wanna come back and stay here. Why are they gonna come back and stay here? Because we have good streets, because we have good parks, because we have a great downtown, because we have great stores, because things are looking good in the community. We've come a long way, this strategic plan, this new, new city manager, this new staff, if you haven't noticed, there's new faces out there that are working in the city. I'm excited. I'm excited, as we all should be. The problem that happens, and it happens in every city, is that when we start moving towards this, everyone wants a bite at the apple. And some want a real big bite. And you can't have that big bite, you have to take a little bite. And you know what? Chew it slowly and savor it, it'll be good. Okay? And then the next strategic plan, we build on that, the apple gets bigger. The apple gets bigger, you take a bigger bite. It's just that as we walk away, there are gonna be groups out there that say, "Hey, you didn't talk about this, you didn't talk about that." No, we did. And we're having those conversations, they don't, they don't finish, they, they don't end here. We're gonna have those conversations and continue to work through them, but you can't have everything in the first go-around. And that's the part that I think as the community has, as we have worked to make this change, to create it, I'm asking for the community to have a little patience too, and, and in, in how we progress. I've never seen anything like it. When we had all those community groups, I mean, we're talking about a very diverse group that came, I think it was in this building, and they started talking about all of the different things they wanted for the city of Santa Ana. You realize that that's never, I can't remember in my lifetime that that's ever happened. I wish other agencies would do that, like our school district, like our board of supervisors. But we did it here. So let Santa Ana be the example to where we're moving forward in this county. I, I did agree with also Councilmember Reyna with his tech, the tech curve that he's talking about. I think it's time for us to use some of this technology that's out there that's really, doesn't cost that much, to be able to get the word out or to work within our infrastructure to make it happen. I liked what our city manager had to say about, you know, our ticketing and, and also our downtown and our meters and so forth. That's all going to provide more opportunities for higher quality of life. I would go into Ms. Martinez's speech, but I can't cover it all in my timeframe, so I just, I just wanna say that, I've always said this about Councilwoman Martinez, is she reads every document, every letter, she even knows, she even corrects it. So if there's a period that should be a comma, she'll fix that. But, but you need that, you need that in a group because it, it allows for you not to make a mistake. And if someone catches it, you're able to make a better decision. Councilmember Sarmiento spoke about not focusing in so much on one group. We need to focus in on our downtown, but we also have different areas. Our Main Street, South Main Street merchants, I think that whole area right there is an area that we are allowing to slip through our fingers, that could be used as a very high-revenue-producing street. I mean, it's one of our main thoroughfares, and there are buildings there that, that we as a city can take a look at, at helping restore. And more importantly, is also making that area safe. As you know, the lighting system there, you can go from Eddinger pretty much to Warner, or from Warner to Sagerstrom, full speed ahead. And so as we talk about bikes, as we talk about pedestrians, I think that's something that maybe we, we can take a look at as well. As far as I'm concerned, I, I've kind of just piggybacked on everyone because everyone mentioned good things, the ideas are great. And I think that when you look at the council members that are on this, that are sitting here today, you have people like Councilmember Roman Reyna who's been at it since he was a little kid. He grew up here, he's been at it, working with kids, they've seen, he's seen them grown up, he's seen, he's seen them get married, and, and they're giving back to this community because the example that someone gave him and then he gives to somebody else, same with Councilwoman Martinez, you have all of us up here who grew up here and really value the city, and we wanna see you succeed. One thing, and only one thing, that I would like to put out there, is I just wanna make sure that in our strategic plan, when we talk about infrastructure, we spent a great deal of money on our street repair. We repaired, I think it was over two-hundred miles worth of, of streets within the neighborhoods. It would be an absolute shame if we didn't start refocusing on going back again to check. And I remember one time when we were all running in 'oh-six, I think that was a big, major push, and, and someone said, "I just can't believe why the city would have ever allowed our city, our streets to get that, that, you know, dilapidated." And so let's, let's be proactive, let's be forward-thinking and do that. Again, thank you, everyone, for coming out. I'm gonna go ahead and start our public speakers, public speakers, there's quite a few of you out there. I saw that there's ten cards from Sacred, I know that Sacred has met with a lot of us, we've spent a lot of time, I think there's no other group that's probably spent as much time with us. But there's ten cards, I don't know if there's any way you could collapse those a little bit, because I know some of the messages are gonna be similar. But I'm gonna start with the first speaker, I'm gonna ask the Spanish speakers are gonna go first, just so that you don't have to go back and forth. At least if they marked it, if they're still Spanish speakers and they didn't mark it, that's fine. But the first speaker that we have, and Madam Clerk, we're gonna go two minutes. If you could let them know at thirty seconds, like maybe, or it'll let, okay. Then we'll go on to the next one. So the first speaker's Carlos Mendez, followed by Apolonio Cortez.
Carlos, here. Muchas gracias, señor del Consilio, señor gerente, por la oportunidad que nos dan de participar en esta reunión histórica. Me quiero referir específicamente a la página trece, número tres, donde habla sobre la vivienda. Quiero hablar de este problema porque he sido directamente afectado. Y pienso que la ciudad puede hacer un poco más sobre las personas que tenemos muy bajos ingresos, no bajos sino muy bajos ingresos, ¿verdad? Porque no he calificado a nivel personal porque mis ingresos no me dan para ningún tipo de vivienda. Y entonces yo quería pedirle a la ciudad que haga todo lo posible porque el número de viviendas que se construyen para personas de muy bajos ingresos pase de treinta o de veinte o de cuarenta, que son lo que hemos estado viendo, los porcentajes que nos permite la legislación actual. Y queremos pedirles de que ellos hagan uso de su autoridad y obtengan nuevos recursos, becas, dinero federal, de donde pueda ser posible que, que se consiga, que lo hagan para que nos beneficien a los que tenemos menos recursos. En esta ciudad somos un alto porcentaje de personas que tenemos muy bajos recursos y es importante que de alguna forma traten de ayudarnos, ¿verdad? Hay alguien que dijo, "A los pobres siempre lo tendréis", y aquí estamos. ¿Verdad? Pedimos nada más que se ponga un poco de atención. Lo otro que quería proponer al Consilio es que se pueda, cuando los apartamentos o casas estén deteriorados porque los dueños no le dan el debido mantenimiento, este, que se cree un fondo en la ciudad que ya existe en la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, que es que la ciudad capte la mensualidad de los lugares en que están deteriorados y que le den un tiempo prudente al dueño para que haga las reparaciones necesarias. Y si no lo hace en el tiempo prudente, que ese dinero que está depositado en la ciudad pueda servir para que el residente... pueda servir para que el residente busque un nuevo lugar y se traslade a eso. Eso es lo que yo quiero pedir al consejo, y creo de que ustedes tienen la posibilidad de ayudarnos en eso. Muchas gracias.
Thank you for inviting, inviting us to this very historic meeting. And specifically referring to page 13, 3, about the housing, uh, there's a lot of, uh, housing, uh, problems here in the city of Santa Ana. And the city should look not only at low-income people, but very low-income people. Because I do not qualify, this is a very, a personal situation for me. I do not qualify to, for the low-income programs because I have very low income, below the, below the, uh, the limits. So the city should have, uh, work on increasing the availability of low, very low-income housing. And you should look for federal funds, uh, grants, or whatever you need to do, uh, to help the city with very low-income people. And, uh, because as someone very, uh, famous said a long time ago, "The poor will always be with you," and here we are. And on the second item, uh, on the, on the very blighted, uh, rental units, uh, we need to find, for the city to create a fund like the city of LA has. So when the, there's low, uh, very blighted properties, uh, give the landlord some reasonable time, and if they do not have, uh, they do not make the repairs, this city has that money to help the people move to, uh, dignified housing. I hope you can help us with this.
Thank you. Uh, señora Apolonio Cortez, uh, y sigue, herm- señoras, Hermelinda Saldaña después.
Buenas tardes, eh, eh, miembros del Consilio, personal de la ciudad. Este, mi nombre es Apolonio Cortez, eh, soy residente de la ciudad de Santa Ana, y bueno, estoy participando con Sacred. Este, mi tema es sobre desarrollo económico, pero, este, le he agregado, este, equitativo. Es decir, que este desarrollo económico debe ser en toda la ciudad y en todas las zonas. En el plan estratégico específicamente, en la meta, eh, dos, dos de la sección, de la sección A y B, debe adicionarse la palabra equidad. Y propongo añadir un nuevo inciso, eh, en el cual debe establecer normas para las empresas que reciben subsidios de la ciudad. Estas normas deben promover trabajos de calidad, salarios dignos, y dar empleo a un porcentaje alto de los residentes de esta ciudad. En la sección 3, eh, también adicionar, eh, un, y debe decir, hacer mapas y dar seguimiento a los gastos en recursos comunitarios como parques, centros culturales, bibliotecas, etc. El, el otro debe decir, cuando la ciudad está contratando servicios o proyectos, debe dar prioridad a los contratos que emplea, a los contratantes que empleen residentes de esta ciudad. En, en el objetivo cuarto, es decir, la, eh, en la estrategia 2, se debe añadir para todas, para todos los residentes y visitantes, de, debe balancear la vida nocturna y comercio en el día.
Señor Cortez, puede concluir, por favor?
Sí, nada más voy a concluir. Y este es algo muy personal, este, quiero dar, este, en, en este motivo, este... Es algo, mi opinión es muy personal, este, es necesario crear un impuesto, eh, muy estrictas en la venta de bebidas alcohólicas, eh, tabaco, bebidas azucaradas, ya que estas dañan nuestra salud. Creo que es importante implementar un impuesto en estas.
Gracias, señor Cortez.
Gracias.
Uh, disculpe con el nombre, es Hermelindo Saldaña, que sigue después del señor Cortez.
The name is Apolonio Cortez, and I'm here, uh, to, to tell you that I'm talking about economic development and equality. And equality must be, I'm talking about not just some areas, but for all wards of the city. And you talk about, uh, you have to add, uh, the word, in sections A and B, add the word equity or equality to these words, because I, I also want to ask to, to have some, uh, money for the city and for the, for the people and the businesses who get money from the city to provide quality jobs, dignified salaries, and have employment for the residents of the city. Section 3, you should add, uh, have maps and follow-up to the community resources such as parks, cultural centers, and libraries. In another section, you should add, uh, having services to give priority to the people who, uh, employ citizens, residents of the city of Santa Ana. And also in objective 4, strategy 2, you should add for all the residents and visitors to have a balance between the nightlife of the city and the day business of the city. In a very personal opinion, we need to create more strict, higher taxes for businesses that sell alcoholic beverages, tobacco, and, uh, sugar, uh, beverages, because these damage our health.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bud Warwick. If you could come up, uh, and followed by, uh, Mr. Alfredo Amescua.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. I only have a, a couple of short comments, although I think they're very important. Uh, more specifically, uh, it has to do with the public input, the system for public input. Using myself as an example, I, uh, spoke at the meeting on the 8th for something less than five minutes. I submitted four pages of my comments on the economic development situation. And this ended up in the report, which is on the internet, uh, that showed that there was, my words were reduced to 13 words of what I would refer to as gibberish. It didn't make any sense. And it has my name on it and my company name on it. I would like to request that it be reevaluated, the paperwork that I've turned in, to see if it couldn't be cleaned up. If not, then I would, I would, uh, uh, just as well have it removed, uh, so that I, it doesn't look like I wrote it. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warwick. We'll go ahead and make sure that someone gets back to you on that. We'll make sure someone gets back to you. Uh, Mr. Alfredo Amescua, followed by Sharon Barlow.
Thank you very much. Um, good morning to everyone. Good morning to the community that is here. And I agree with most of you who have said about the fact that this is a historical, a historical process that you guys are going through. And I certainly wanna congratulate our current council. Very quickly, I don't wanna reemphasize some of the things that you've said, everything that you have. Most of you have said some really, really great ideas. I just wanna share with you two or three things that I think are very important. And I share this with, uh, with your city manager. This is an ideal plan. And as you indicated, that, Mr. Sarmiento, uh, there will be some ways to, to see that some of these things get done. But without having to have measurable goals and set timeframe, I think that plan can just sit there for years, for years, and not be able to get it done. So make sure that you give us something back to the community, a progress review, but also make sure that you identify priorities. If you look at all the objectives that you have, you have about 300, if not more, okay? We're not gonna be able to get that done. But I think those of you who have worked in, day in and day out at the council need to identify with our city manager those priorities that are gonna be critical and essential in the next few years. So I, I would recommend that very, very highly. And making sure that we, that we provide us with some input and an opportunity to provide some, some suggestions. Very quickly, um, I would suggest, I think one of you already made a reference about the fact that there may be some way to entice the community and include them. So there may be a way to put together a strategic community group to work with city council and meet with, uh, with you all in every three months, every six months, every year, so that in fact, our community could have hands-on, uh, responsibilities, provided input. The other thing I wanna share with you again is that safety in our community is very, very critical, among many other things that you guys are discussing. I would recommend highly that we develop and that we upgrade community policing. We need to make sure that we develop a system by which our community feels safe. And finally, in the interest of time, I just wanna share something else. It is very, very, very important that when we put together a plan for economic development, that an advisory committee from the, from the business community, hopefully including everyone that is providing some direction to the city and to all of you, would be the sitting at the table. Because at the end of the day, it is those of us who have a business, it's those of us who essentially are, are making the difference in our community in terms of, uh, uh, taxes, are gonna be significant to the progress. So thank you very much for your input.
Thank you, Mr. Amescua. Thank you. Uh, we have Sharon, Ms. Sharon Barlow, followed by Mr. Octavio Pina, or Pina.
Thank you for letting us speak today. Um, and thank you for Councilmember Sarmiento and also Pro Tem, uh, Tina Harrow, for, um, standing up for us and, uh, agreeing that the South Main Corridor should be put on this plan. Um, a lot of focus has been put on downtown, which we love downtown, and we wanna keep that focus going. But we believe if you wanna see youth and education grow, um, city financial stability, community health, livability, engagement, and sustainability in the city by investing in the South Main Corridor, you're going to see economical growth. You're going to see new jobs, new businesses come in there and open. And, um, our youth, I mean, that is a focus that I have, and I know a lot of my colleagues with the South Santa Ana Merchants Association, we focus with the neighborhoods and the youth in this area. So by investing in that corridor, it will create revenue and fund your plans that you have on this five-year strategic plan and going into the 20-year plan. So, um, thank you again for this time, and have a good rest of the day.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Octavio.
Good morning to everybody. Thank you very much.
Uh, just one second. Jose Rhea, you're on deck. Go ahead.
Vince and Sal, thank you very much for, um, mentioning the South Main Corridor. Michelle, David, and Roman, we really, really, uh, believe that your efforts with youth will make a difference in Santa Ana. We wanna call your attention as far as leaving out of the five-year plan, which in reality is the 20-year plan, the South Main Corridor. And just remind you that the South Main Corridor goes from First to Warner, Flower to Standard. 11,000 household, approximately 40,000 people, 10% of the population in Santa Ana, 15,000 youth. Don't forget about it specifically. Please do mention the South Main Corridor on the five-year plan, which is exactly a 20-year plan, on your goals and economic development, page 7, along with the other organizations that you're mentioning on number C, 1C. Reason why we want the South Main Corridor to be mentioned is because you're mentioning the others. We support everybody in Santa Ana. We support downtown, we support Bristol, we support all the organizations working for the community. Do not forget about the people from Santa Ana. South Main Corridor has an influence, over 40,000 people. Lot of voters that will thank you for your support. Please do mention it on the five-year. We do not need to go into the specific about what is it that we want, what is it, what we can do, how much money there is. We don't care about that at this particular point in time. The important thing is the South Main Corridor is mentioned on the five-year plan, which is a 20-year plan. Once it's mentioned, then we can sit down, and like you said, Sal, the apple will get, will get bigger. We are patient. We know that it will happen, but we need to be named there because we're representing 40,000 people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Jose Rhea, followed by, uh, Sulema Valera.
So, um, good morning, buenos dias. So, um, I'm looking at, at, uh, your PowerPoint, slide 11, where you have your budget. And, um, let me just start by, by thanking everybody, uh, particularly the, the community and the young people that are here. It's really, really encouraging to see that. And in my 30 years as a resident in, in Santa Ana, this is the first time that I see this happen, and it's really invigorating. Um, let me also thank, um, Councilmember Sarmiento and Councilmember Martinez for all the support that you give to, uh, safety, health, and education. But also, uh, wanted to thank, uh, Executive Director, uh, Moet, for, uh, the long collaboration that he has had with the Madison Park Neighborhood Association. And, and the city council, um, excuse me, the city manager, Cabazos, who took the time to come and learn about our model, the, uh, the green project, that if you look across, uh, this, this seven initial, uh, lines, uh, rows that you have on, on the, on the budget, we're doing six of, out of seven already on a very good, a very, uh, small budget. So, uh, I, I would recommend, uh, like Vince Sarmiento mentioned, you wanna stretch your dollar, invest in something that is already there, is working, and is working well with minimal resources. So support that. You know, there's, this, this is just one model of something that is already working in the city. Our top, uh, our top priority is safety in the park. Uh, safety and access, because we do have a little league that is monopolized, good chunk of the, of the park. And it, the, the park is off limits for most of the children in the, in the, in the, uh, in the neighborhood, which is totally unfair. Um, it is, when it's off-season for, for Little League, the park is still closed. The kids in the neighborhood have no access to it. And, and just, it's just, you know, if it is the people playing, uh, cards and drinking, um, the, our park is off limits for most people in the community.
Mr. Rhea, your time is up. If you can conclude, please.
And, and the other thing is that, uh, so we are already engaged, we're doing, doing a lot of healthy stuff. So invest in some of the things that's already working, like the green project at Madison Park.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Uh, Ms. Sulema Valera, followed by, uh, Sandibel Ramirez.
Um, hello, I'd just like to say, um, first of all, thank you for all your hard work in this plan. I'm here representing Sacred and my community, and we're hoping that restorative justice can be added under Community Safety Objective 1, Point F, and can go hand-in-hand with community policing. Restorative justice is not the same as community policing. Restorative justice is a philosophy or theory on justice that guides conflict prevention and response. Restorative justice practices can be implied, can be put into practice in the Santa Ana Police Department, the Santa Ana Unified School District, and nonprofits. An example of a restorative justice practice that can be used in the Santa Ana Police Department is called police-based conferencing. It employs trained police officers to facilitate a meeting attended by the juvenile offenders and their victims and their respective family and friends to discuss the harm caused by the offender's actions and to develop an agreement to repair the harm. The role that the city will play in the restorative justice practices will be one of leadership and coalition building. It will supply funding to develop a Santa Ana-specific restorative justice plan and bring the Santa Ana Unified School District, the Santa Ana Police Department, and the community-based nonprofits to this table to discuss how, it, how best to implement the restorative justice. International research led by the Cambridge University found that frequency of repeat offending to be down as much as 55% for some offenses compared to those dealt with by the criminal justice with our restorative meetings with our victims. Victims of crime also reported greater satisfaction with the outcome compared to those dealt with through courts. In all, the community hopes that Objective 1, Point F, under Community Safety, can lead to enhance the police department's community policing philosophy to balance both traditional policing and restorative justice practices to address and reduce violent prop- property and gang-related crimes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Valera. Uh, next up, Sandibel Ramirez.
Hi. Um, in addition to Sulema's-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Ramirez. Uh, Miriam Lopez, you're on deck. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Um, so in addition to Sulema's, uh, like, more explanation of restorative justice, um, we wanna include that Sacred is calling on the city to develop a plan to take action to implement a, a pilot restorative justice program in co- in collaboration with, um, Santa Ana Unified School District, nonprofits, and the Santa Ana Police Department, and the Santa Ana Unified School District Police Department. Sacred and all of the other organizations and the residents present, and the residents present here are calling for a city in which youth do not have to be victimized or ever feel the overwhelm, overwhelming pressure of violence at schools or within the community as a whole. Restorative justice is not sol- Restorative justice is not solemnly peaceful conflict resolution, but it is also a preventive source in which youth and residents can prevent conflict and harm. We hope that the city will redraft the plan to include restorative justice practices under the Community Safety Objective One, Point F. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Miriam Lopez, followed by Sabdi Alvarez.
Hello, my name is Miriam Lopez, and I go to Sacred from high school, and I live in Ward Five. I am a member of Sacred and Santa Ana Building Healthy Communities Coalition. First, I want to say to the youth in Santa Ana, we appreciate the council's interest in supporting youth policies. Being involved in the strategic plan process has given me the chance to be part of the decision-making in my city. We have a few recommendations for the youth objectives in the plan. We appreciate the efforts in bringing a new bear exhibit into the zoo and taking youth to the Catalina Island, but we would like to see something that benefits the youth in the long term. For us, this means that the strategic plan should include a city internship program that provides the youth with real work experience and prepares them to contribute to the community as adults. I've had the opportunity to experience the value of internship by being an intern at Kidrix. Through this internship, I have gained responsibility. It has exposed me to a working environment, and it has given me role models and mentors that I can count on to help me succeed in life. But I am one of the 138,843 youth in Santa Ana, and we need to get the other youth to experience the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sabdi Alvarez, followed by Nayexi Trejo.
Hello, my name is Sabdi Alvarez. I attend Gordinas Fundamental High School, and I live in Ward Five. Through participating in the strategic plan, I was able to, for the first time, to be part of decision-making in what would affect me and my city. I'm going to talk about the type of internships we want to see in the strategic plan. We propose that the city expand, strengthen, and reorganizes its existing internship program. These internships should be for Santa Ana youths that attend school in Santa Ana and don't have to give their social security number. We would like to see that the internship programs be streamed into one. We want to see this with designated staff that is in charge of coordinating the program. We want to have these internships of at least 30 internship positions, at least 10 hours per week per school year, and 30 more during the summer that last for at least eight weeks. These internship programs should have stated descriptions and designated internship supervisors. The interest should get compensated with school credit and/or stipends. The transportation should be covered by bus pass, reimbursement, and/or lend a bike just to go green. We want the strategic plan to set our goals and strategies that will help us youth in the long term. Instead of building pipelines to jail, let's build pipelines to jobs. By investing in our youth, we invest in our economy, community, and our future. We would like to present to you 448 cards from people that support the vision of Sacred and CABHC, Really Healthy Communities, and our broad coalition of over 30 organizations and community groups. The card says, "My vision for Santa Ana is a city with economic growth for all, access to good housing for income levels, public transportation, libraries, and more community resources. Inclusion of the community and local government, a safe environment where the community is involved in public safety, art and culture that reflects the cultural heritage of the city, better opportunities for youth to learn, grow, and lead."
Thank you very much. Nayexi Trejo, followed by Sam Romero.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. And I, as a member of Sacred and 13-year resident of the city of Santa Ana, I feel like this is a great opportunity for me to share my, to speak my mind. First of all, I'm very happy to be here, and one thing that brought me here is my kids. I'm a single mother, and I've been trying to reach for a dignified house for them. So the process is hard, and I've been struggling for quite some time now, over a year. I really like the strategy that you guys are proposing on number three, B, which is 50 percent affordable more units. I would like to propose a 25 percent. And with that is, you know, I don't know if I'm asking for too much, but I think most, a lot of people will be more, you know, satisfied with that, because I see that you put, provide at Santa Ana residents, employees, artists, and veterans. And I would like to also include, because I'm not a single, I'm sure I'm not the only single mom around here, and I would like to put there single parents. I also would like to talk about a little bit of the study of the creation of the rent trust account, which is a little bit of like what LA is proposing, which is if the landlord doesn't fix the problem, which is it can be maintenance, plumery, ETC, ETC, well, the city will hold the rent, and the city will give it back to the landlord as soon as it's fixed. I think it's a great incentive to push the landlord after, of course, after several warnings that you have to fix this, you have to maintain safety in the community. If they don't do it, now then the following step will be that.
Mr. Trejo, if you could wrap up.
I see that. And other than that, I'm pretty pleasant with the strategy plan. Thank you all for your effort, and of course, I'm very, very proud of Sacred. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sam Romero, followed by Victor Payan.
Hey, by the way, guys, this is a great deal that you're doing here today. I know very rare do you hear me commenting, you know, nice things about you guys. You guys are doing a great job. But you did exceed your two minutes, okay?
Sam, you got that on record, by the way.
But anyway, following up what Roman was saying, you know, bringing in jobs, manufacturing, that sort of stuff, I believe that's what you said earlier. And I think along with that, you have to come up with some kind of a training program as you entice somebody to come into the city to set up shop. Same time, start developing some kind of training program so the residents of Santa Ana can get that decent job coming in. That decent job would mean not, you bring in a factory, you don't pay what they pay in China, so they can have a living wage, okay? That's what you got to do. As far as the South Main merchants, they need a lot of help, and we support them in the downtown area, we support them. Now, the downtown area, as you concentrate on, seems to me like more nightlife, the daytime businesses are dying, so we need some help there, same as you would need for South Main merchants. And we're talking about the daytime businesses. That is badly needed, or we're going to lose the downtown as far as retail is concerned. When it comes to housing, I think Mr. Benavides has some communication with Orange County Community Housing, Housing Nonprofit. It would help probably to get together with Nora Mendez, Executive Director, along with Alan Bowen, nonprofit corporation, who has a lot of experience how to create housing for the very, very low income. So I would suggest you do that, okay? And I thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Thank you again. Victor Payan, and followed by Steve McGuigan.
Good morning. After, morning, afternoon now. Anyways, I want to thank you all for this process. It's been an important process, and United Artists of Santa Ana has also been, I think, at the table in advocating for some of these efforts in the community plan. And I'm glad to see some of the arts moved into the strategic plan, particularly with affordable housing. That's going to be very transformative for our community. Sandra couldn't be here today. She's at the Youth Summit at Evergreen in an apartment complex, community room, and that's kind of the vision of what we want to see is in terms of arts in the community that's really out there where the people are. I wanted to talk about a few things today, touching on what Councilman Tena Haro said about asking, "What are you doing for me tomorrow?" And inasmuch as the arts being central to the economic development of Santa Ana over the last 10 or 15 years, we really want to advocate for the arts to be central in the plan for economic development for the next 20 years. And one of the things that we've suggested was a creation of arts empowerment zones. I come to you today, we've had a lot of successes, but in the last two weeks, I just wanted to inform you that we have seen a number of displacements within the arts community. Mass Media Records on Fourth Street, their rent was just tripled. Arte de la Tierra on Main Street, it was a community space, they're losing their space. And it's hard to succeed as an arts-related business when you're at the vulnerability of month-to-month rental or tripled leases. And maybe there's a way that we can work with the city to create a plan, to create something that works for building owners and the artist community and small businesses to protect the investments and the creativity of these entrepreneurs. We just had in Santa Ana, Exine Zervenka, who's a punk rock legend, chose a small warehouse space near Grand and Chestnut to hold an estate sale. She's moving to Austin because California got too expensive for her. And she chose Santa Ana as a place to have her estate sale, so the people came from all over the county. We asked them why they chose Santa Ana, they said it was central to San Diego and Los Angeles, and that's exactly what we're talking about in terms of investing in the arts.
Mr. Payan, if you could close.
And I think that, you know, we see a lot of storefronts that are empty in the downtown, and we, as artists in the community, are looking to also expand within the rest of the city to help the economic development of that. But as we see so many empty storefronts and offices, you know, we don't understand why building owners would prefer to keep them empty than to give them a shot at other local business people to compete in the American dream. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Last but not least, Mr. Steve McGuigan.
Good afternoon. I apologize for my casual attire. I just came from a graffiti paint-out event. You guys do good work. I have two quick items I'd like to propose to you. The first is, it deals with public safety. And over on the West End, there is the West End Substation over on Harbor. Now, our PSO is going to be retiring before long. I know Mr. Keltner, who owns the property where the substation is located, has been donating this property for years and years. As part of the Harbor-specific plan, I'd like you to consider, in terms of strategy, making sure that there's a substation over on the West End of town. It helps the officers in terms of being able to write their reports there. The walk-in business in there is quite, I mean, there's quite a bit of walk-in business there. And having somebody there to do problem-solving on that West End actually takes away from the amount of police contact that the neighborhoods have to have and that some of the community has to have. And they don't want to have that police contact, they're sort of forced into it, if they don't have a place like the West End Substation to go to. So as you look at the Harbor-specific plan, strategize on a way to keep a West End Substation open into the future, if not in the same location, but in a location on that Harbor Corridor, because that's a great location and it serves the city well in that area. Second, I'd like to speak to you about our population in general. I see there are sections in this that actually address youth, again and again and again. And according to the Orange County Council on Aging, the fastest-growing demographic in the city and in the county is in fact seniors. Each of you is going to be a senior someday. Each of the youth that you're doing programs for is going to be a senior someday. So it's time to start the process of strategic planning for seniors as well. They need programs, they need resources and facilities, they may need housing and other things like that. Some of it can be pushed off to the county and so forth, but in terms of, say, parks and rec, library, those types of resources, rather than rolling everything to one demographic, please make sure that you're looking at all demographics and making sure that everybody is getting equal use out of these resources, because this is a group that into the future, we hope that we'll see a lot more kids in Santa Ana, but into the future, we can tell you right now, based on the curve and what the information from the Council on Aging, we are going to have to deal with seniors coming into the future, and this is the opportunity to start that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McGuigan. That concludes our public comments. Mr. City Manager, I spoke with the city manager earlier. If any other council members have any other comments, they can direct them to you via email or during the meeting. This was great, because it was the first time that we get together and see where our commonalities are. And as we can see, there are a lot of commonalities, as you talked about. I'm going to, again, thank everyone. This is a, yeah, it won't be the last. So this was a good start. We're going to continue to move forward. We're going to continue to meet with you individually, to continue and kind of continue to hash out things that we can put in here. At the end of the day, let's not forget that we are all doing this in the best interest of our community, and our community is vast, and the needs are vast as well. So let's continue to work together. Thank you so much. I look forward to our new staff, and I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.